The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world.
You think he's gone? He's not gone. That's the whole point. He's never gone.
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Alrighty. Alright, let's get this shindig on the road, shall we? Hi, how you guys doing? My name is Tom Duggan. I'm the host of the paying attention podcast. Hi, I'm Top Two Guys Smoke Shop here in Salem, New Hampshire, at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. I want to thank Ed Sullivan, our fine producer, who's been with us through most of these, uh, through all of these debates, at least so far. I think he's gonna take a day off, uh, for the mayor's race.
For Halloween. I gotta go trick or treating, Tom.
Everybody's all worked up about Halloween. You would think it was Christmas for crying out loud. Tonight, we have the West End Methuen City Council candidates. Two people of the four here sitting on this stage are going to be representing you in the West End on the Methuen City Council. And that's really important because no matter who the next mayor is going to be, they're going to need help with the next city council to straighten out some of the messes that are going on in Methuen and to bring Methuen forward. Um, so, um, I'm gonna just, uh, give you guys a couple of minutes. There's no time limit, as you know. There's no rules. You guys can engage with each other. You can talk to each other. And at some point, I will give you a chance to ask each other questions. Uh, why don't you start by introduce, and we have to thank our sponsors. I'm sorry. I knew, I knew, I knew I was breezing through this too quick. Uh, we want to thank our sponsors because, um, they're paying for the time here. I have to buy the studio time and I have to pay Ed, who makes like a million five a year.
A lot.
A lot of money. So, uh, so we have to rely on sponsors to do shows like this, and we appreciate them. Because without them, we wouldn't be able to educate the public about their candidates running for office in Methuen. Climate Design Systems, if you have a heating, a, a AC problem, you need a plumbing problem, you call Climate Design Systems. And they're not just supporting this debate. They're not just sponsoring this debate. Climate Design Systems is, uh, sponsoring all of our debates. They decided to come in for all of them. They love what we do. Want to say hi to Nina out there who, uh, who called us up and said she wanted to be part of this. Pest, Patriot Pest Management, we have all these, uh, triple E scares about the mosquitoes. But they also do like bed bugs and stink bugs. And if you have any problem with any kind of pests, uh, in your home or in your business, you want to call Patriot Pest Management. Royal House of Roast Beef, best roast beef in the Merrimack Valley. I don't care what anybody says about that place in North Andover. They used to have the best roast beef in the Merrimack Valley. I live in North Andover. I'm closer to them than I am to, to Royal House of Roast Beef. I drive to West Methuen to get my roast beef from Royal House of Roast Beef. They have amazing food. And your CBD store, which is right down the street from my office on Main Street in North Andover, seventy-five, uh, seventy-three Main Street, North Andover, go in and see Brian. He also gives free samples. Now, I've got like issues with my joints, uh, my hip, my knees. Um, I go downstairs, I get a free sample every day and I feel great for the rest of the day. So, uh, you might want to stop in, talk to, uh, Brian, just free samples, free creams. Um, and he'll talk to you about whatever your ailment is and what they can help you with. And then our good friend, Jason Marku, Jason Marku from Marku Towing. Um, he is, uh, sponsoring this debate. He also sponsored a debate, uh, I think the, was it the last one or, or two debates ago? We will be talking about them throughout the night, uh, before, so let's just get this show on the road. We're gonna give you guys a chance to just introduce yourselves. Tell people why they should vote for you. Give them a little bit of a snapshot as to who you are and what your priorities are. And we can start with, uh, we'll start with Frank. Frank Gallo.
How you doing? My name is Frank.
I'm doing good. How are you?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Tom, for hosting this event. I think it's really nice, uh, you doing this.
Thank you.
And, uh, my colleagues here tonight, I think we have some great candidates. Uh, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a father of four. I have three girls and one boy. Two girl, two, two of them currently attend Methuen Public Schools. And, uh, I'm the Chair President of the Housing Authority. I've been on there for six years. I'd like to say that I had the unique privilege of hiring our Executive Director, uh, during a hiring panel. I learned a lot. A wealth of knowledge in community development as well, and, uh, the procurement laws and, uh, budgetary issues. I think I'd be a great candidate because I bring a little bit of, uh, experience to the table. And I think, uh, that Methuen is ready for a change.
Alright, and by the way, thank you everybody for being here. Uh, I definitely appreciate all the candidates showing up. Bill Bryant, why don't you go next?
Yep. Uh, thanks, Tom. Obviously, Valley Patriot, Two Guys, Studio 21, uh, Royal House is a place that I go to. I, I do want to just say real quick, Butter Bing and Butter Boom in Methuen, which is a sponsor of the last debate.
Yep.
It's not Butter Bing's. So I, I know sometimes it gets confused.
We, we shortened it to Butter Bing's, but it's Butter Bing Butter Boom.
Butter Bing Butter Boom. So it just, for me, in, in, in what I do, Tom, and all my community involvement sponsors are huge. So to get people to get out to invest in the city, to invest in, you know, whatever it may be, is tremendously important. So I, I agree. And obviously, thank you to all the sponsors that, that jumped in. As I said, my name is Bill Bryant. I've been in Methuen for over twenty-five years. I'm a special ed administrator slash principal at Crest Collaborative. Um, I've been working with youth, uh, my entire career as well as, as a volunteer.
And by the way, thank you for that. I don't want to interrupt you, but I know you do a lot with the kids. So I do, I personally appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, so I, obviously, I, you know, like Frank, I have two kids right now at Methuen High School. I have a, an older stepson who was a Methuen High graduate. So naturally, the time that I put in into my community is, is around my kids. You know, I'm gonna be around them as, as long as I can till they go off to college. So I know that there's some, you know, some criticism or, or, or feedback that hasn't been so positive about how much I'm involved with sports or, or kids. And, and if you're not involved in that, you don't understand the importance of the development of youth, whether it's in a band or arts or, or sports, then you really shouldn't be talking about, about kids. And, and that's something that's very important to me. But it's also important to the community. Because the better our, our youth does and, and how we take care of our, our seniors, it really says a lot about the community. So for me, you know, being involved in the Charter Commission, being involved in the Youth Commission, being involved in the MAIC, which is about our, our city and, and the, and the fields and the parks and, and the things that our youth and, and, and our residents use, has been real important to me. Over that time, getting involved in the city more and more and wanting to see it grow. Right now, it's, it's, it's real difficult to listen to people talk about the negativity. Because as a business, as a, as a, you know, new homeowner, as someone that has a, a new family that wants to find a community to live in, and what they're reading and what they're hearing is not really helping out the city of Methuen. And, and for me personally, you know, what we should be talking about is economic development and how to bring in businesses. We have a ton of housing for over fifty-five, but they're not spending their money in the city of Methuen. We're not bringing in enough businesses. We're not bringing in enough of, of companies that could utilize the money that, that we're spending on the over fifty-five. So for me, that, that is really my driving force. There's a lot of other things that candidates and myself are gonna talk about that needs to improve in the city as far as our government. But as a, as a city as a whole and as a taxpayer, someone that has a home, who pays taxes, those are the things that I worry about and that I want the voters to identify with me as someone that's gonna have a strong voice and as someone who's gonna speak the truth and be out there and, and have those difficult conversations. Cause I've actually had those conversations before, whether it's been a school committee meeting, a city council meeting, in my profession, in my livelihood. And, and that's what I want to separate myself from, you know, the folks at this table. Is that I do have that experience and, and it's gonna become really important when you're on city council to have those difficult conversations.
Alright, Mike Samot, hero police officer.
Geez, thanks, Tom.
By the way, I got a lot of emails, people telling me I, I was kissing your ear end by calling you a hero police officer. But in my view, I don't care who you are, what you do, if you're running toward the bullets while everybody else is running away, you're a hero.
Yeah, I appreciate public safety, Tom. I really do. And thank you for having us. Thanks for hosting. And I thank you to our sponsors. My name is Mike Samot. I'm running for the West End District to, uh, represent that district in the city council. I've been a resident for the past twenty-two years of Methuen. I have three children in the Marsh School. My wife is a high school guidance counselor. She has been for the past fifteen years at the Great Lawrence Volk. I'm a proud veteran and a police officer for the past twenty-four years for the city of Lawrence. I have no conflicts, no personal agendas, and decided to run for the seat because I'm tired of getting kicked around by our city government, which has put the city in a tailspin and has let us taxpayers down. I strongly oppose the Police Superior's contract and vow to fight for the taxpayers on this nightmare that is the byproduct of our city government's inability to simply do their job. And that's why I decided to run and the police considered me for your vote November fifth.
Ally Saffie.
Hi, I'm Allison Saffie.
I'm sorry, Allison Saffie. I was trying to.
I do go by Ally. Um, I'm twenty-six years old. I was born and raised in Methuen. I went to all Methuen Public Schools up until eighth grade. I played sports along with my siblings and we all had, took all different avenues in schools and sports. Um, so I have a pretty good view of all of those things. I even was an assistant coach for my little brother's basketball team. My dad used to coach us all and get kicked out of games repeatedly. Um, I'm running because I, we started going to, well, me and my family started going to city council meetings regarding a neighborhood issue we were having. And then I started seeing everything else unfold, um, and the lack of accountability, responsibility, transparency, and the loss of integrity in our government. And I'm running to bring back the residents back their voice. I have zero conflicts of interest. I have no special interest or anything of that nature. Um, I, I think that you can't have transparency, accountability, responsibility unless you are willing to have, to make these gray areas that we allow politi, our politicians to create. These, they're no gray areas. We allow them to like cloud our view on, on subjects. Um, and we allow like the passing of the blame. That, that needs to end. You have to just sit down with people, hold them accountable. I know it's called finger pointing, but you can't have responsibility, accountability, or transparency without actually naming the people involved. Otherwise, you're just talking to a wall. Um, so again, I'm, I'm running to give residents their voice back.
Alright, so you know, we've, we've, um, we, we've talked in the, before the primary, all about the police and the fire and the schools. So I want to talk about something different because nobody else is talking about this. There's a proposal, or at least there's the idea of a proposal in Methuen about bringing in a marijuana facility. And some people are against it because they're just against anything that has to do with pot. Some people are for it. Um, and a lot of people don't understand that this is not a pot shop. This is not the place we can go buy marijuana. It's just a growing facility that could bring in a lot of money. Uh, but there's, there's a lot of different views on this. And my view obviously doesn't count. I don't live in Methuen. But I'd like you guys to talk about what you think about bringing a, allowing a marijuana growing facility only into Methuen. What you, whether it's good or bad and what you think the implications are either way. And I'll let whoever wants to go first, go first.
Uh, I'll go first. So I think that, I guess you would obviously have to have like open meetings and get the residents' feedback. But it's essentially like having a farm, from my understanding, if you're not actually selling it from there. I'm not sure how that works between like residential or commercial zoning, but obviously, those are things that you would have to work out in meetings. Um, watching the last debate, I did see the whole point of liability, which I was a little confused about because I've never heard of a business relying on strictly the town to, to provide like, I guess, safety hazards for them. Um, like if you open up a bank, I'm assuming they have, they pay for security. They don't like, even my understanding with this would be that like you would expect, that would be part of your business plan, would be to have some type of avenue to provide security and whatnot. Um, I think as long as it's worked out through the correct avenues and is done to the right standards, I would be okay with it.
Anyone else?
I'll jump in. I was at the last city council meeting where the initial conversation came up about proposing the open meetings to have the conversation. And I think, to me, that's the place to start. There is, this is such a new situation for the country, for the state. And, and to be quite honest, since the, since the legalization of it, you know, unfortunately, it's kind of what you smell all over the place. So there is so much more information that has to come out as far as data and information on how that's impacting our youth, how it's impacting adults, how it's impacting people driving. However, right now, i- it is legal in Massachusetts. So to not look at the potential income of having a growth facility, not necessarily a pot shop, not a place where people are gonna go buy marijuana, to me, the, the, the negative would be to not even look at it, to not even, you know, entertain the conversation and to see how could this affect our, our tax base? How this could impact the, the city in a positive way by having a growth facility? And for me, that's the, that would be the approach I would take as a city council is give me the information, provide me the feedback. And if, and if it was a situation where I have to spend taxpayer dollars to, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what, what Ally's talking about, but it, it sounds like a, a, a statement of securing our facility so we don't get robbed. Well, that's, that's kind of on you as a, a business owner.
Exactly.
What Methuen needs to do though, is start to attract businesses. How we do that depends on what the business is and, and how we, how we do that. But I, I think there's definitely an open mind. I think for residents that are concerned about the drugs and the actual usage of it, that is something that we continue to investigate and, and have open conversations with our health department, with our police department. The, the one group that isn't really talked about enough is our fire department. They're the first responders that are dealing with a, a, a ton of medical issues with the opioid crisis. I, I'd love more information from them and, and how that's impacting car crashes and things like that. But we're talking about, and, and for this particular conversation, is a growth facility. And could the city benefit by having a business like that? I think that's something we have to openly talk about.
And as, and as we go on, I'm gonna give the other two, uh, as much time as I can on this. Um, when, I live in North Andover. They wanted to do the same thing in North Andover, up on Osgood Street. Um, the, the, the people who wanted to bring the marijuana facility in were willing to pay ten million dollars to the town, like a yearly fee to the town. And I know that the, the marijuana facility that they, that they were previously talking about back in two thousand seventeen, there was almost no money coming back to the town. So I'd like you to work into your answer what you think. If we, if we're gonna have one, what should they be bringing to the table in order to come to Methuen?
Tom, are you referring to a retail pot shop on that?
No, just, just the growing facility.
Well, I, I didn't think that the, uh, profits from a retail, from a, a growing facility would be that large. So we would obviously have to explore that. I mean, it would be beneficial for the city. And again, like, like they said too, you know, no cost would be incurred as far as policing. They would have their own security. Being a police officer, I would keep my personal feelings out of it, be a voice for the, my constituents and, and see how they want, want the, um, this to go. And, um, you know, get involved with that joint committee and, um, figure it out that way. But whatever benefits the city without causing any, um, you know, um, task on our police department or fire department for that matter, I'm all for it.
Frank?
I have to, I think that we have to think beyond the box as, as a whole of the city of Methuen now. I mean, times are changing. Marijuana's legal. You're driving down the road, they're smoking it in front of you, they're walking down the street, they're brazen, they're, they're smoking it. I mean, I'm not, distribution centers, I'm totally, uh, against. As long as somebody can't walk in there and, and buy their local weed, that, I mean, but as far as somebody growing it and cultivating it and farming it off to other cities and towns, I'm all for that. As long as they dot their i's and cross their t's. Like I said, we're coming into a new era. There's gonna be a lot of ideas that we're not going to like. But if we want to stay alive, we're gonna have to pursue some of these avenues and take a strong look at it. It's, 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 it's part of evolution. It is what it is. Uh, that's, that's the direction that the world is going in. And who knows where this is gonna go? This, this marijuana legal thing, you know what I mean? I mean, uh, what I don't understand is, is at a state level, it's legal, but at a federal level, it's illegal. So I'm kind of confused on how they're even allowing some of this to even go on. I mean, it's kind of like, the feds can come in anytime they want and say, okay, we're shutting everything down. But, but on a state level, they, they can say, okay, we're gonna grow it, we're gonna sell it, we're gonna let you drive around, we're gonna let you have X amount as personal consumption. So I'm kind of confused. But getting fact, getting back to what you originally said, I think they're gonna have to take a look at all these ideas that are coming around. And if Methuen can make some money on it and letting people come in and grow it, I think that's, you know, I mean, and I don't see too many other people knocking down the doors to come into Methuen. So, so that's the way I feel about it. Dot your i's, cross your t's, let them have their own security. Let's read their contract thoroughly and see what we know what we're talking about.
So, oh, so good.
I just think we have to do our job as a council though. Before we do approve that, we have to, it's like giving someone a golden parachute. I think we have to confirm because ten million seems very exorbitant just for a growing facility. So I kind of doubt those numbers.
They're gonna make millions. They're gonna make millions on.
And I guess that's the difficulty of being a, a city councillor. At that last meeting, there was a group of seven or eight people that, that I've seen around and I, I, I know what their concerns are. You know, people feel, you know, drugs are, are, are a detriment to, to, to society. And, and in some instances, they're correct. And I think the research of understanding how does marijuana use impact a, a cancer patient? Or, or, you know, people with ADHD or different things like that. Those are, that's the research that we need to see and, and, and not shutting something like that out. But I, I go back to what Frank said. With the amount of over fifty-five residences that we have in this city at, at, you know, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars, how come businesses aren't coming to the city of Methuen? And that's a question I'm gonna have as a city councillor is, people, businesses should be knocking on our door to address the people that are living here and they're not. And that's where I feel like our city is getting in the way of that, that progress. And that's very concerning to me.
People are wanting to move out.
Yeah. Before we move on, the, the people of Methuen, when this was on the ballot for the statewide measure, voted no.
For legalization.
For legalization.
Right.
So given, given that that's how the majority of the voters in Methuen at least felt at the time that they did that vote, would you guys be interested or opposed to putting a non-binding referendum on the ballot and just asking the voters, what do you guys think? Like, you know, we're, we're elected officials, but we serve you. Put it on the ballot and let the people decide.
Absolutely.
It's not a bad idea.
I, I think anytime we could do that. I mean, that was the whole conversation with the charter. When, when I got involved in that, there was language in there that's just outdated, that, that you don't necessarily need someone to vote, whether it says, you know, the mayor, he should be able to do this, or he or she. And there's little, there's language in there that should just be changed. But the question about, you know, a, a mayor, two-year term to four-year term, the goal of our, our committee was to put those referendums out there. So anytime the, the citizens of, of the city of Methuen can vote on something as, as big as that, I think absolutely you should do that.
Transparency. We can't have personal agendas. We're here for the people and not for ourselves and not for certain people. So.
Ally, you said absolutely. I don't think anybody heard you. Do you want to expand on that a little bit?
No, I just, what, uh, Mike said, I think that, yeah, our job is to be a voice for the residents, like that can't be stressed enough. So if they say no, then no. If that's not what they feel is right for us right now, then so be it.
The city council decided when we found out that the school department was four million dollars in the red, they decided to go and borrow four million dollars from the state to take care of that. At one point, one of the councils, I believe it was Jessica Finicaro, said, wait a minute, shouldn't we borrow a little more? Because what if there's something comes down the road that we didn't foresee and we can't go back and borrow any more money? Once we borrow this four million, that's it. And we get all the state oversight that comes with it. Do you guys agree with the city council's decision? I think it was six to one or six to two, um, that vote. Do you agree with the city council's decision to only borrow four million dollars? And what do we do, as a side question, if come December, the police superior officers go to arbitration and the arbitrator decides to give them any amount of money, no matter what it is, there's no money in the budget for that because of it? Anybody?
I, I'll answer to that. I, I think, you know, if you're talking about something coming down the pike that would have been taken care of with an additional million or two million from the borrowing for the school, that's one thing. If within arbitration, now, this is the difficult part to answer that question, Tom, is nobody has the figures.
Right.
There, there isn't enough information out there. And, and, and that's part of the, the issue that I think the four of us are having, is we're not playing with the full deck right now as far as the information that's coming in. So to say that a borrowing another million would have taken care of that potential arbitration, it probably won't. And, and that's the concern. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, as far as me running, it's because I want to be part of those conversations. I want to be part of the solution. But it still goes back to the city right now is burdening the taxpayers based on property tax with taking care of all these issues that are coming up. And they're not thinking of other solutions to be able to raise money to, to slow down the tax burden on, on the, on the residents of, of the city of Methuen.
But if, if we have budgets and budgets.
Frank Gallo, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tom.
I keep forgetting I gotta mention your names because people are listening audio too.
Tom, and, and to the people at home, if we have budgets in all these, uh, school department, police department, the DPW, the fire department, they all have their budgets. It gets to a point where we have to hold these, uh, we have to hold them to their budgets. And that's the bottom line. And if something comes up, they're gonna have to figure it out. We can't go in there and tell them, uh, how to manage the school department. We can't go in there and tell them how to manage the fire department. They should be given a budget and they work that budget the way that they.
Can I agree but disagree? But not at the expense of cutting off, you know, fifty patrolmen? You know, and, and so that's a concern to me. As much as the, the, the department heads and, and the mayor are responsible for the departments, I also don't want to see them making irresponsible decisions that could put.
No, I agree with you.
So I, I agree with you, but I think the council's strength is to say, listen, this is your money. And, and depending on what happens, we're gonna support you, but you also have to make.
Well, we gotta be, we gotta be level-headed about this too. We, we can't be saying, hey, look at, we're gonna give the captains, lieutenants and sergeants and the chief all this money and we're gonna, we're gonna cut the throats of the little boys. I mean, that, that, that's totally ridiculous. We're hoping in today's times that people are gonna be level-headed about it. I mean, to be honest with you, we really even don't even know what, what type of money we're talking about with the police department. Nobody has any concrete facts. Show me the W two. Show me what they've made last year. Show me.
That was one of our best answers from before the primary, by the way, when you said that. I thought it was brilliant.
No, honest to God, I mean, everybody says that they're not making this type of money. Well, show me your W two's from last year, boys. It's all I'm asking for. Just show it to me. And then, look at, nothing goes down, everything goes up. Everybody wants a two percent, a one percent, right? Everybody wants a little bit of money and I get that. But when you're eating steak every single night, right, and everybody else is eating hot dogs, there's, there's, there's a problem here. You know what I mean?
Right.
And we gotta get to the bottom of it. And I think that somebody's gonna come full disclosure, full transparency and say, this is what it is. Somebody's gotta have the nerve to step up to the table and say, this is what it is. Now, you're either gonna go with it or you're not gonna go with it. Bottom line. Because I think the way it's been handled in the past is, is, is crazy. It's crazy. Nobody seems to really want to get to the bottom line of it. Ally?
Right, so.
You must have something on this.
So that is a good point. Nobody wants to get to the bottom of, including the current, a lot of current sitting councillors. When people, when they are asked for names and they are asked for actual information, everyone gets the runaround. We have councillors sitting on city council who took part of the Police Superior Union contract. They sat in that meeting. And I cannot say this enough, this whole entire issue for the Superior's contract could have been avoided that day, that night. We would not be here right now if people had a, the least bit or whatever, an ounce of integrity, responsibility, accountability and transparency. If they had any of that, one of those, and said, hey, what I'm reading is confusing. This doesn't look right. These numbers look weird, anything. Or say, we didn't, we, we violated six, six charter rules, six laws to, to pass this forward in a very shady way. Like, I understand what you guys are saying, but if we're talking about accountability, let's start there. Like, I understand that this expands way further into and it has very like deep roots. But that was our, that was our safeguard. City council in this aspect was our safeguard. They should have stopped this. They failed. Those, so those sitting councillors should be held responsible.
Go ahead.
As, as far as the four million goes, Tom, we'll start with that. Our bond rating was downgraded by Moody's. And just to tell you why, the rating outlook, this was what they cited. The negative outlook reflects the city's strained financial position and challenge over the near term to structurally balance operations and rebuild fund balance. The outlook further incorporates financial pressure from rising special ed costs as well as a labor contract that has significantly increased certain police salaries. So no one talks about the twenty thousand dollars a month that we're paying on interest. So we gotta pay that off first. And then maybe that's why they didn't want to borrow more because we gotta pay that four million dollars off. As far as the police contract goes, it's, it's egregious that they even presented it. They knew what the numbers were and it's shameful. They knew what they were and they're shameful. They're holding.
And you're a cop.
I'm a cop. No cop is worth that. And I can tell you, the highest paid captain in Lawrence makes one fifty with a master's degree, twenty-five years. It, it's ridiculous. They're holding us hostage right now. Okay. And this is going to arbitration. They're hoping that maybe we can come to terms and do a compromise because they're, they're holding us hostage and they, they want ransom. And maybe they're gonna settle for two seventy-five or two fifty, which is way out of whack. And it's gonna bankrupt the city. So we gotta fix that. We gotta come to the table. The new mayor, the new council, gotta sit down with the police chief, the police department, the, the Superior, the Superior's, um, you know, union and get this right for the city. Because it doesn't seem like it's headed that way. And if it, and if it does not fix itself and they, they, they hold us hostage, we're gonna go bankrupt. We're gonna go into receivership. We're gonna have massive layoffs, just like that happened in Lawrence, and people are gonna regret it. So I'm hoping that's not the case.
But, but Tom, you just said it. You know, Mike, you're a cop. How could you speak that way? And, and that goes for all of us. There's not a person in this city.
That's right.
Or, or a resident of Methuen that wants to speak poorly of, of police or fire or our schools. Because that's the essence of, of a city or a town. The, the better your schools are, the better your police department, your fire department, so goes the battle. When a, when a person's looking at moving into a city or a town, the first thing they look at is schools. The second thing they do is, and you showed us, buy a local newspaper and you read about what's going on.
Hopefully, the Valley Patriot.
And that's why I struggle with, with how we're presenting ourselves and how we're attacking other people. Because more information has to come out. You know, is it, is it people didn't do their job? Or was, or was what was presented to them wasn't necessarily presented accurately?
More information about what?
About the, the stacking of the contract.
But the contract is very clear. It's out there and so is their ethics letter. It's very clear. But like, for instance, one of the councillors who was here and said that she was confused, that to me is proof that she had the correct contract in front of her. She, she's admitting that she was unclear and she didn't know what was going on. So right then, I would say, what do they always say? Charter object or point of information? Like, it, I mean, that was our stopgap. So if we just, like, this is again, this is passing the blame. So we don't want to hold responsibility, but we'll hold, we'll now blame the Superior Union. Yeah, they are responsible, but so is our city council.
I'm not speaking for any of the people who are there. That's not my role. I'm talking about for me in moving forward. The inspector general of our state is involved for a reason. And when that comes out, for the folks that were part of that.
It is out.
Two of, you're right. Two of them are working for the very police department that we're speaking about. So what I'm talking about is not the current sitting council because.
Some of them are the same.
I think only Jen is the one that was part of that who wasn't in the room because of.
DeJugue was.
Which is our mayor, which is the conflict.
Still in our social capacity.
Which is the conflict. Once again.
She's a conflict too.
They're gonna own that for themselves. What I'm talking about is.
But they're not owning it. And we are here. And we are here, sitting here, doing this blame game instead of saying, these people did this. And it doesn't matter if there's a conflict of interest, they still violated multiple laws and regulations to get to where we are.
And they own that. What I'm talking about is moving forward.
Right, but you cannot move forward until you actually confront the issue. So we're just supposed to move forward and do what? And we're still all angry that this money was spent this way. So how do you move forward without a solution? You can't have a solution without first knowing what's going on.
Wow, Ellie comes out swinging. I think I'm like, that's the thing I agree with. First of all, I think it's an arbitration, to be quite honest with you.
It is.
Okay, so if it's an arbitration, we have to wait till the outcome and see what they feed us back. And then when we get that back, then we can start raising the flag, or we can start doing whatever we want. But we really can't do anything right now till it's done with arbitration. And I personally don't want to get here and start slinging mud at other people. We already know that there's a misjustice done, but there's not much we can do, Ellie. I understand what you're saying.
I'm not, first of all, I'm not a little kid. I understand what's going on. I re, I read it, and I, but the best part is, is so we don't want to do that, we don't want to talk about it, yet we're talking about it, and we have sitting city councillors releasing letters to the Ethics Commission basically blaming their misleading and blaming the superiors union for the entire issue, basically, when it's not. That letter actually first blames the city council of 2017.
Rightfully so.
So, I mean, I agree with you guys. I understand that we need to move on, but like, the idea that we would move on without literally naming people, because if we don't name people, and we have sitting current councillors in the next two years, who were then on 2017 sitting council, that's very scary. That means that they got away, we're setting a precedent. I said this last time, that if we let things like this fly, you set a very scary precedent. And we have right now. So if we get another contract coming in front of us, and they don't provide a financial impact statement, which is required, if they do two reads in one meeting, they do this whole thing just before the election, which is coming up, so that it passes, which is literally what happened, that's a very scary precedent, and it wouldn't be shocking because we did it once. Why not do it again?
So Ellie, as a city councillor, the current attorney for the city, that is the one that advises city council, that's a person that's still involved-
Right.
That provided information to the previous city council and the current city council.
For information.
So is that somebody that needs to be held accountable?
Yeah, but so do the city councillors.
But that's-
Do they not read the charter?
But that's my point right now. That's the role-
Putting it all on one person. Why do we do that? I don't get it. Like, hold everybody accountable.
We're not on the city council. What I'm saying is-
But you don't have to be. We elected them. It's our job to hold the people we elect.
We're in another election, and I'm sitting here because those are the questions that should have been asked. We could sit here and talk about the previous council, the current council. My point is, that problem still is gonna be there when the new city council comes forward. So when I say I want more information, I already know it exists. The potential contract that is in arbitration is still there. It's gonna be there in January when the new council comes on and the new mayor comes on. What I'm saying is, what I don't want to do is talk about how this particular people lied, it was their fault. If the arbitration sides in the police department, that is going to cripple this city. So what I want people to do is stop saying your opinion as far as this person lied or that person lied. Let the inspector general, let the arbitrator decide on that, and stop, you know, criticizing a potential contract that's gonna doom this city for not only the next few years as far as current contracts, but retirement benefits down the road. And that's why I want it in the court system and not debated here. The problem is it-
It is in the court system. It doesn't matter if we debate it here, they're still going to deal with it.
That's my point.
Frank, you've been off the quiet. Hopefully, that the next city councillor gets elected will do the right thing and vote no.
Well, we were hoping that in 2017 too, and it really didn't work out that way.
Well, obviously, it didn't go that way. It didn't go that way, and now we've got a, I hate to say it, but we have to wait till it's done with arbitration, the new city council gets in, the new mayor gets in, and hopefully that the vote will go the other way, and this wrong will be righted. I mean, what else can you do? I mean, yes, I do, do I think that some of the old city councillors, some of them are running for reelection, yes. And maybe now that everybody's aware of what happened, maybe they won't get elected. Maybe you'll say, okay, Joe voted yes for it, we don't want him in there. Tom voted no, we want him in there. I mean, we can go on and on, you know what I mean, without naming people's names, right?
But that is accountability, and that is transparency, that's responsibility. You cannot have any of these things until you name people.
But you're in a new election right now. I mean-
I understand that, but you, this is such a bizarre thing. So, we have a major issue. We have multiple major issues here. So we are just now expected to, if we're all, say we're all elected, we just say, oh, okay, cool, let's move on. Nope, because we're still in debt. We're still in limbo with this contract. Like, there's no result, there's no resolution in sight. And if we do lose in arbitration, I guess we lose, but I mean, us talking about it, and also, so if we shouldn't be talking about it, I guess the current city council-
Is that gonna make it go away?
No, but that is, that is accountability. It's the definition of accountability and transparency.
Pack up your sand blocks right and go home now, then, if that's the case.
We have to identify the problems.
That is so crazy.
We have to implement oversight. What I've proposed from the beginning, and we can actually use all four of us here, because four good examples. Committees, as city council members, we can't do much with departments. We can only cut budgets. But if we start committees, for example, I would ask the mayor to implement a committee on public safety and security. Appoint me the chair of it, where I can go in with an audit company and see what they're doing wrong and see how we got here, because it's gross mismatch management, and I've been saying that since day one. They had an open checkbook, Zani, they put Zani to sleep, and because of it, we're paying the price, and they put that council to sleep. And it's egregious. We could put Bill in charge of the school budget as a chairman of the committee with his expertise, Frank in inspectional service and community development. I mean, just in examples of solutions, but also holding people accountable and ridding those people of their positions if need be. Because let me tell you something, there's fat in all these budgets that we have to cut. Otherwise, we're going bankrupt. Very simple.
Sticking kind of on this topic, let's forget about the police superior officer's contract in particular, and just talk in general. One of the things that always bothered me, whether it's Lawrence, Methuen, or any other community, when the police, the fire, the DPW come up with a contract, the municipalities always say 0, 2, and 2. Who in their right mind wants to sign a contract where they get 0% raise in the first year? If you go in the private sector, nobody gets 0% in the first year of their contract. Can you guys talk about that a little bit? It's always bothered me, like, forget the superiors, because it's a different issue. But why should firefighters who run into burning buildings, the DPW guys that are out there at 2:00 in the morning fixing pipes, take a 0% raise in their first year of every contract? I mean, that means every three years, they're getting 0% raise one of those three years, every three years.
And don't you find it odd, though, that the zero after Zani's last year was his last year? So for him to say, I left, and I left the city in great shape because I didn't have to raise taxes, that's because your last year, you negotiated that 0%? So for me, it's asking why that zero was there and who's agreeing to it. You know, it could be a 1, a 1.5, and a 1.5, and I think that's the financial impact statement. Those are the conversations that I want to see happening is, based on the Methuen's average median income of families, how is it that certain employees of the city are making double that? Those are the questions that need to come and be had in city council, on public television, in front of everyone, because those are the things that are taking off the residents, is there's folks that are making double what they make but work for the municipality. So I don't think anyone wants a zero, but it, there has to be a history and a track record of what you've been making and how that's impacting you.
And we have to, we have to live within our means, too. If we don't live within our means, we're gonna go bankrupt. If you don't like what you make, go somewhere else.
When you guys in Lawrence, you're a Lawrence police officer, when you guys in Lawrence negotiate your contract, and I know that unfortunately the mayor screwed you guys for quite a while without any contract at all, but when you guys finally settle a contract, don't you find it egregious as a guy who's out there doing the job that the first year of every contract you get is a zero?
It's frustrating, but you see that everywhere across the board. This is a municipality where a blue-collar town, you know, we're not a Brookliner on Andover, where Methuen, Massachusetts, are 51,000 people. I was at a conference last week with police management, FBI Leadership School, and there were a lot of supervisors in there that do contracts. And I met a Worcester captain, and we were talking about the Methuen contract, and he makes $120,000 a year. That's what his, in Worcester, with 470 police officers, they have nine captains. So he's realistic, he knows that, you know, there's no 5-5-5 anymore, and it's 0-2-2, that's what you see across the board. That's what I got recently on our contract.
Frank, go ahead. How about a comparable study of other cities and towns and see what's going on out there?
Well, they're all doing it, though, and that's what bothers me. I mean, again, I have no say, but but what bothers me is whether, no matter who you are, if you're working for municipality, why should you ever take a 0% interest in the first raise of any contract?
But that's what they're giving. That's what they're giving. That's what they're giving, and these mayors, they can, like they said, they can balk, and they can say, well, I gave a 0%, I'm up for reelection, or I'm leaving, and I left the city and town in great shape, so we got a 0, 2, and 2. Yeah, it's not right. They'd be better off saying a 1, 1, and 1, you know what I mean? Or a 2, 2, and 2. I mean, think about it. What's a 2% cost of living? I mean, what is that? After taxes, there's not much meat left on the bone after that, is there?
And they're trying to pay less on the retro, is what they're doing with that 0% also. So that's another way that they save money.
But it's everything else that they're getting besides that.
Right.
You know what I mean? They're getting all this extra money. You're getting comp time, you're getting flex time. Who's keeping account of all of that stuff? That's what I'd like to know.
And that's a big part of why they do a zero, because unfortunately, if you're not running the city well, you don't know the financial impact. So it's much easier to say 0%, and then let's take the year and figure out, okay, how do we, how do we get a better idea of how much this is gonna cost us down the road? Thank you. And that's troubling too, because they should have a financial impact of the next five years, the next seven years. And my concern is they don't, and that's part of what being on the city council is, not only the here and now, but how are things down the road? How is retirement gonna impact us? How is the salaries of that 2% raise for year two and then year three, how is it gonna impact us down the road? And I don't feel like we're doing that in a way that's, that can project what it's gonna impact us.
We gotta let Ellie in on this, because she hasn't said a word on this topic, and I'm fascinated to know what she thinks.
Why? Do you want me to go nuts again?
Yes. Yeah, we don't.
Listen, we thought Joyce was gonna be the only one thrown in bums, and now I'm actually enjoying this one.
I like this side of her.
Me too. Very feisty.
I think that it's a red flag. Like, I mean, that in itself is shady. I'm assuming that maybe that part of it is to, like, offset their budget for that year, and then maybe they're planning, I don't know, somehow, in the next few years that they're gonna make up or some way or another. But my thought is, is, one, like, we have the CAFO, people are, like, running around bragging. That's a consequence. That's a consequence because we overspent and because we have no idea what we're doing with our money here, which is fine, and I'm glad that we have it, and we should definitely keep a position like that. But I don't like when we get clouded by the thought of that, that is like an asset to us. It is now, but it's because we, or our city officials screwed up. Like, that's why that's there. But moving forward, I think in order to move forward and to get our city back on track financially and taxes, so that, you know, the retirement community, people who are on fixed incomes, and veterans, and people who aren't always able to get raises themselves, they can still pay their taxes and live in the city, is freezing all of the departments and going by, one by one, like what Mike said, and having an independent review, meaning that each person, the entire department is getting viewed, meaning that they have enough staff, they're not overstaffed, they're not understaffed. School students belong and are coming from Methuen. Teachers are licensed and up to par, and even, like, engineers, we've, like, this is, I, people have said, like, oh, everyone's licensed. Well, we have proof that that's not the case. We had an unlicensed supervisor, we had an unlicensed city engineer. We, the superintendent, sorry, superintendent fired teachers who were on, whatever, lapsed in things. So like, we have proof. There's proof that there's a need for an independent review. We just need to do it. That's, I think that's where we start, and then at that point, I have no doubt that that would help us save money. And, I mean, people are always going nuts that, like, the police department have all these special, like, gadgets or whatever. Well, if they are functioning to an adequate, as like the cities all around us are, and they're being efficient with their money and stuff, then that, that's okay, but if they're overspending and they're overcompensating for, like, what we are dealing with in our city, then that would be an issue, and it goes through all of the departments. I think that that's where we have to start.
But it goes back to our charter. If we're not following the charter, if we're circumventing it, if we're finding loopholes, and that's where the strength of the charter is so important, because there is rules in place. City officials shouldn't have been taking jobs within the city, not only while they're sitting on city council, but for at least a year after. There's provisions in the charter that should state that each department should go through, whether every three years, every five years, a full audit to make sure that the line items that you have, that you're putting money in, are not being spent on other things. If the line item says, you know, this goes into training for public safety, but then I find out later on, it went to overtime, it went to something else, that needs to be answered to, and that's the concern I have when we're gonna do that audit, is there's gonna be way more negative information coming out about the line items in the different budgets.
But that's okay.
But that has to happen.
Right, I agree with you there, but the only issue that I have with that, and that I'm assuming we disagree on, is if you, the charter, great, people are not following the charter. That's abundantly clear. However, again, if we don't name those people, and we don't name the departments that are finding loopholes, and the people that are finding loopholes, what do you expect to change? Because why would we have to enforce the charter on people when currently it's not being enforced? And there's state laws. So the two people that took jobs within six months, they broke state laws. You're not allowed to do that.
I think within six minutes.
Nobody held them accountable.
Some of them, one before he left the council.
I mean, and you guys don't want me to name people, so I guess it is what it is.
Both those guys have already been named in a-
I understand. Oh, everyone's been named, but we're saying that we're, like, it's unethical to name, no, it's not. If you break a law, you get named.
The state gave them permission to have those jobs. A home rule petition that was presented to the state allowed them to take those jobs.
And why, right?
Yeah, right, exactly. So what city official asked the state to do that? I don't think the state was just like, oh, yeah, this looks like a great deal. Somebody obviously came in and asked for that deal.
The council took a vote, they asked State Representative Linda Campbell to walk it through the state house. Linda Campbell walked it through the state house. She got the support of the state legislature to allow in both of those situations. Now, that's not a knock at Linda, she was just doing what the council asked her to do. The council's the one that asked her to do it.
Yeah, I wonder if it's up to the-
To me, it all comes back to the council.
Tom, can we all sign up for one of those jobs?
It sounds like a big conspiracy is what it sounds like.
So, did the council get the residents' view on that? Did the council ask the residents what they thought about that, what they thought about making a loophole so that two people could continue on into this government and continue to find loopholes? Nope.
I've been wanting to move on for 10 minutes, but this is so good, how can I? My God.
Anybody that voted yes on that contract, right, should be embarrassed to run for reelection.
And you talk about the contract, about the numbers were, like, most are 0, 0, 2, or 0, 2, 2. What was the Methuen superiors contract? What was that, like 100 and some percent? And let me just tell you, according to their budget, what their 2019 accomplishments were. Continued to provide top-quality law enforcement and customer service to our community, even while under a severely cartistic political environment directed at our police department, that was caused by them, of course. Launched a new records management system, trained all 114 employees, purchased a drone, and trained two police officers. That's their accomplishment.
First of all, they should have hired me to run the drone, because I have my own drone. I would have come with my own drone, and they could have just vomited out to me. I do want to move on a little bit. Before I do, I want to thank our sponsors. Marku Towing, Jason Marku, he's a good friend of the show. Your CBD store, I actually use CBD oil on my knees and on my hips. It actually does work. It's amazing. Go see Brian at your CBD store, 73 Main Street, North Andover. Royal House of Roast Beef on Lowell Street in West Methuen. They're a great family, they make great food. And again, I come from North Andover all the way over there. Instead of going to the place in North Andover, everybody thinks has the best roast beef, it doesn't. Patriot Pest Management, if you're worried about Triple E, you need spraying for mosquitoes, or if you're worried about bed bugs or stink bugs or ants, or whatever it is that you have for your home or your business, give Patriot Pest Management a call there, I'm a Methuen business, and we encourage you to call them. And of course, Climate Design Systems, if you have a heating or a, right now, winter's almost here, right? So everybody's gonna be checking the heating systems, call Climate Design Systems if you have a plumbing issue, or any kind of HVAC issue. Moving on a little bit, as much as I don't want to, because this was so much fun. The current mayor seems to be skating out, seems to be skating into the sunset with absolutely zero friggin' accountability for anything that he's done for the last two years.
I think escaping is the right word, Tom.
Yeah, and he doesn't show up at meetings, school committee meetings, city council meetings, he's completely unaccountable to the public. That's just my opinion. Do you, what do you guys think of the job, and maybe there's something that I don't know about? What do you think of the job that the mayor and the current council have done? Who do you blame more for the mess that we're in? The mayor or the current council? Current council, 100%. Yeah. 100% the current council. I think that there's no accountability, but-
I'm gonna disagree with Frank.
Yeah, me too.
Frank, the previous council, the one that the current mayor was part of, is the one that basically has given this new council. So when we talk about the current council, there's definitely things that I can't say I'm in full agreement, but what I will say is they've set the tone as far as the next council to make sure. I mean, I remember watching the debate regarding the garbage and the recycling contract, and if it wasn't for them to say, hold on a second, this is lumped in as one, but there's two bidders, and when they finally pulled the onion back, they realized that if they divided the contract up, that, I believe it's JR M, who is the garbage-
And Harvey, Harvey and JR M, right.
Right, and Harvey getting the contract of recycling would save the city money. And I think that's the accomplishment of the current council. They're the ones that stopped the police contract, regardless of naming names and things like that. Right now, we're paying based on 2014 because of the current council. So there's a lot of things- So there's a lot of things that they've done. They, they still show up to meetings. They're still active in the, in, in the city government. They're still having, you know, the meetings have, have slowed down as far as four or five hour meetings. But part of that is because the largest debate they were having right now is in arbitration.
Right.
The inspector general is here. So I think for anyone that's running for city council needs to look at the current council and say, there's aspects of what they all did that was at times courageous. You know, you know, even current politicians running for office now were critical early on, but are now taking a different stance based on new information that comes out. And that's why I'm concerned about how do you name someone's name until you have all of the, all of the information? Because you don't want to be accused of, of doing something that you have never done or, or being a, a, a walking conflict when you're not. And, and the last thing people want to do is speak before they know all the facts or speak before they know somebody and accuse them of something and then finding out later, geez, now that I got to know you, you know what? You're, you're not who I thought you were. And, and it's, it's a different point. I don't want to do that because that's what's happening to me right now. People are calling me a conflict when, you know, Mike, your wife works for Greater Lawrence. As a city council, you're going to have to vote on the Greater Lawrence budget. So you're going to have to let people know that your wife's on the budget. Just like my daughter, my wife is not a teacher, which was written in your paper. My wife is a program assistant. She makes about $19,000 a year. And when that vote comes before the council, I'm going to do what everyone else is going to do.
You should have called me on that. I would have corrected it.
Just like you're going to do is you're going to call up ethics and say, listen, my wife is a program assistant in Methuen Public Schools. When it comes to the meeting on this date that I have to vote on the Methuen sub-public school budget, can I vote? And they're going to say yes, because Bill, you have no direct impact on your wife making any more money or not. So that's not a conflict. And that's the problem right now is people throw out this word conflict and they have no idea what they're talking about. If I was going to help a neighbor get a raise for something, for, for him to do something for me, that's a conflict. And that's what I'm concerned about in this city. And that's what happened with the last city council. Is favors were given to allow for other things to happen for potential jobs and whatnot. A conflict when you live in a town or you have people that work for different departments, that's not a conflict if people know about it. And I, I didn't mean to put you out there.
No, no, that's okay.
We've talked about your wife working.
Well, it's still a conflict whether people know about it.
Well, correct, correct. But there's a government agency for that. So to say someone that's involved in the community, that's raised their family, that, that has no conflict, i- is a little, is a little naive. You know, you said you, you plowed for the city.
Right.
So you, you basically have worked for the city too.
Yes.
To, to live somewhere and, and be involved, the odds of you having no conflict, you have to almost be a hermit.
You have to be a hermit. And what I meant by, what I, what I meant by.
But Ally, you're also 20, 26, 25 years old. You haven't started your family yet. You haven't been involved in the community to be able to, to, to spread your wings and do that. And as a taxpayer, I want to look at someone that's going to, that's going to be in city council, that's going to know this is the burden I have when I pay my taxes, when I have my mortgage and, and I'm raising my family. I can now identify with the voters that are going to look to me to say, you have to make that right choice. You have to stand up to the mayor or to that department and not let that go through because I won't be able to afford my mortgage.
Right. I still pay taxes.
Tom, what I meant about the current council is, is, uh, is the reason why I said the current council is because not a lot of faces have changed between this council and the past council that actually voted on that. So I do stand corrected with that.
Yeah.
Because when you, when you think about it, right? Only a few seats have changed. And all those people that are sitting there were prior to the ones that voted yes on that contract. Very few seats have changed. So I, I, I don't want to throw them underneath, underneath the bus. But when you think about it, look at the faces there and look at the faces that were back there originally when voting on these issues.
And I will say that the current council, um, for all of whatever their thoughts might be, is the first council that I know in my history of watching Methuen city council meetings. They went line by line through the budget. I hope you guys are all going to continue that.
Oh, you have to. There's so much scrutiny now. And getting back to the mayor, um, that, that boils to the charter where we, I think we should do away with the mayor and have a city administrator and increase the term or the contract. Because you get what you pay for $80,000 and you got a police chief that's making over $300,000. There's something wrong there. So I, I think we have to, you know, we have to, uh, increase that and, and have a better pool. So.
Ally?
Yeah, I would say 50/50. I think that council has done a pretty good job for the most part. I think some counselors, uh, first of all, I'll just talk about the mayor so I don't go crazy. Um, so what I love about him is he ex-nayed our whole sweetheart deal. He was like, ah, take it out of court. You, like, I don't, he's, actually, I think he said, um, I don't want any more lawsuits, which is the most ironic thing that's coming out of his office. Because he probably stems the most lawsuits. And like, I'm not making up things. Yeah, I'm not making up things. Like there's proof, like McCarty's stepfather, like, so now I don't know if the town is paying for that or if he is, but either way, like he had city officials basically like blackmailing them. I don't know. Or like encouraging them to do these things. And then he had someone, he had an ex or a retired police chief who's a, um, a private investigator, plant a camera in. Like these, these are liabilities. Like those are major issues. So to me, him, him actually going against the residents and ex-naying are, are valid, very valid, very real concern to all of us and our taxpayers. So that he, I guess, could just fund his own liabilities is like absurd. But then going on to the council. Uh, I do think for the most part, they've done a great job. I do think that first of all, conflicts of interest is not up for like interpretation. It's a law. It's very clear and cut. It doesn't matter if you're positively or negatively being affected. If you have a direct family member, then you are considered a conflict of interest. So I understand that like, yes, you should always be very mindful and as long as you're getting like permission. But I think that right now I, I, I have an issue with the way that our city council portrays conflicts of interest. It's not up for your interpretation, which I think a lot of them sort of do. It's a very gray area, but they've made it a gray area. It, it's a law. I mean, go to mass.gov and look it up. It's very law, it's very clear and concise. And there's also pretty good examples of cases where it's either not, um, not a conflict or it is a conflict. So I mean, if you are in question, I feel like not only going there, but if you're concerned as a resident, I would go to that website and check it out.
Um, I'm a little disappointed, Bill, that you didn't call me when, uh, when I got that wrong in, in my, because all I care about is getting the information right. Um, that you, that your wife is not a teacher. She's, uh, some kind of a, what is it? She's a.
It's called a program assistant.
Program assistant.
She supports teachers in the classroom.
Okay, great. Um.
Wait, can I? Sorry.
Toughest job.
Go right ahead.
Point of, just like a point of inquiry, and this might even help you out. But so it's brought to my attention that like your job would be a conflict for you.
So.
So I guess this could help you. I don't know. But I, I guess I'm asking.
So when I decided to run, you know, the first thing I did was call the ethics department. There is a provision for city council as far as what you're able to do. I won't be voting on the Methuen police, uh, Methuen school department budget through special education. So the, the, the fallacy of, uh, you know, I'm getting money or whatnot, that's not how it works. A collaborative is, is a regional special education collaborative. We work with cities and towns that, that are all over Massachusetts and Southern New Hampshire. I don't dictate who comes to us. It's, it, we provide.
But you do vote on the school budget and within the school budget, there's money that goes to Crest and you're the principal.
Correct. I'm not the executive director and I'm not part of the board. The board is superintendents and school committee members that make up those cities and towns. So when that budget comes to a hole, if it's me voting on the special ed budget, I'm not voting on that.
Right.
But we don't do that as city council. If we decide to do that, then at that point, I'm going to make that known and, and I haven't hidden that fact.
Right. No, I didn't say you did. I was just curious.
But to write that I'm getting millions of dollars, let's, let's be honest.
Well, I never wrote that.
No, I know. But, but it was in, in your newspaper. For someone to, to write that, never even talking to me, I don't even know who this person is. Though, those are the.
I don't think he likes you.
Those, but I don't even know who this person is. So to, to, to say that, it's when people, it's when people say, geez, why are you running? Why are you? Because I love this city and I care about this city. And, and for the last 25 years, the time that I've put in has never been disingenuous. So to have someone that I've never met that's not part of this city make up something or say something like that, we should all be concerned. Because regardless of, of who you think you're protected by or who you're supporting, you know, for other candidates, we're all in this on our own.
Yeah.
There's, there's none of us are beholden to anybody else. No one else is being supported when you're being attacked. It's yourself and your family. For me, it's my wife and my three kids that get to have to answer to someone that's, that's, you know, that's questioning my character or, or, or calling me a, a walking conflict or whatnot. And, and to be quite honest, Tom, when I saw that, it, it actually didn't bother me because for the people that I know, for the people that I've met across this city, they were more outraged than they were questioning my character. So when I saw that, I'm like, okay.
A lot of times those ads backfire when someone takes out an ad. And you know, people need to know at home, I don't dictate the content of anybody's ad. If somebody called me and said, I want to put Ally Saffy in, in an ad and I want to put a Ku Klux Klan outfit on her and I want to call her, that's, that's up to them. They're paying for the spot. And so, you know, when it comes to, I know sometimes people blame me for what's in other people's ads. My job is to publish the paper. Their job is to put what they want in their ad.
You, you still have some control though. I mean, I think there's a reasonable responsibility of, you know, the, the reference you just said. I, I, I would have, I would have probably privately called you and told you that I disagreed with that.
Yep.
You know, someone saying that, you know, there's a picture of, of Jen Canaan and I and, and that, you know, this and that. I, I told you this before. I'm running for public office. I get it. I'm out there. But there's a reasonable expectation of, of what people are saying about other people. And that's the part that absolutely disappoints me in this process. And when I go to a door and people ask me that question or when people called me up, when they saw that, that article, i- in my opinion, it did backfire. Because what people have in question of, of me is my veracity and, and my love for the city of Methuen. So when they start to see negative things, it goes to, Bill, who do you think that came from? To me, it came from the person that paid for the ad.
Right.
But you could ask why. Follow the money. People do crazy things when they feel like their money is in jeopardy and that's the trouble that I have right now. So.
Yeah. How do you, how do you think DJ Deep feels? You should have seen, if you, if you think your, your ad was tough, you should have seen the ad they put in about DJ Deep. That was a different union though.
But it goes back to the voters though, Tom. People have to, people have to be more informed. And as much as it's our job to get out and knock on doors and, and put out, you know, press releases and, and, and send out flyers and things like that and signs that are right now being, you know, blown down Broadway and, you know, all the hundreds of dollars that we spent that's flying down the road right now. Folks have to also pick up the phone. You know, my number's out there, my email's out there. Ask those questions. When I get a, a question that someone says, in one word, who are you voting for for mayor? I'm, I'm not. I'm running for city council. You know, before I decided to run, you know, had I supported Jen? Absolutely I did. I've known Jen for, for, you know, five or six years. Did I vote for her over Zani the first time? No, I actually voted for Steve Zani. And absolutely to, to every decision, the man let me down as a taxpayer and as a voter. And it disappointed me. So to say that the, the same ad that just came out against me, came out against Jen during, during Zani's campaign is, is, is really concerning to me. Because there's similarities to that attack that I was just part of, that I didn't even know the person. I had no, no knowledge of that. But my first time, you know, when Jen ran, I actually voted for Steve. I went and met with him. I was part of the Methuen project to get a stadium. And that's the first time that I said, just because you're the mayor, doesn't mean we can't disagree.
Well, this brings me to my, my next question. And Ed said we can go a, a little bit over. And I, and I, and I promise you I'm not picking on you, Bill. Uh, but the, the, the picture that was used in that ad came from a Jen Canaan ad online where you were in an ad with Jen Canaan asking for Jen Canaan volunteers that you're, you're supporting her. You're standing with her and all her supporters in her ad. So I want everybody at the table, because I think it's just fair for transparency for everyone, to talk about, tell the people at home who it is that you're supporting, other candidates, other elected officials, and who's supporting you? And I'll, I'll give you a chance to go first.
I'll jump in that first. In, in the back of my car, I've had a Jen Canaan sticker the moment the, the stickers came out. I, I, Tom, for me, it's, it's, it's accountability. So, and you know, everyone's involvement in their city is, is, is what they can afford to do. For me, I'm going to answer to, if I, if I get on at city, if I'm elected on November 5th, if I don't do a good job, that's going to be part of, of, of my legacy in the city of Methuen. My concern right now with the two people running for mayor is one of the candidates for the 25 years that I've worked my tail off, I've never met him before. So, you know, and, and his quote was, I was in a slumber and, and, you know, I'm now awoken. But if you don't do a good job over the next two years, you can go back to doing what you were doing before. For me, what I look at Jen is, and what she's done has been, she's been part of the community. But I'm not running Jen's election. That's on her. She's going to answer to when she was on the council. That's not my responsibility. I've not hidden the fact that, that she's someone I'm supporting, but I'm not running around campaigning for her. For me personally, I'm campaigning for Bill Bryant for West End City Council. And I have no say with the people in the west and the people in the central vote. I want to talk about why did the last two mayors turn to the regency? And basically tell them, I'm going to support you and turn on them. How come the city of Methuen isn't, is supporting Forest Lake? You know, there's plenty of things going on in the west that are not being addressed that I'm going to be responsible for. But as far as have I had conversations with almost every single person that's running for public office? Absolutely. But who I'm, who I'm supporting or who, you know, I've been part of, that, that's been my, that's been my involvement.
Are there other candidates that you're supporting or that are supporting you? People who are endorsing you maybe in other races or?
I, I think you wanted to find the support. Have I talked to, you know, DJ Borogad, you know, Nick DiZoglio, Steve Saber? Absolutely. I've, I've talked to Joel Ferretta. I mean, you know.
Yeah, but nobody at home cares who you're talking, talking to. They, they care like who's supporting you? Who's, who's, or who are you supporting? Do you have any other candidates that you're supporting or that are supporting you?
I, I've, I've been at events where Nick DiZoglio has been. I've gone to events for DJ Borogad. So i- in that part of it, you know what I mean? I, I go to events that my, my time allows me to, but to say that I'm actively campaigning for anybody, I, I can't say that I am.
Frank? I'm campaigning for Frank Yallow for West End City Council. That's who I'm campaigning for, Tom, and I'm telling everybody that.
There were no candidates that are supporting you? There's no.
I can't be bought. I can't be influenced. And I can't name anybody that's called me up that's actively, uh, running for election right now at any level.
Frank's lying right now. Frank, you've supported me a couple of times. No, no.
That has called me up and said, uh, we're standing behind you. Because nobody's actually picked up the phone and said, hey, Frank, we're on your team, other than my wife and kids. And to be quite honest with you, and that's, that's where I stand on, on that.
Tom, it's a, it's a lonely.
It really is. It's a thankless thing. You think about it. Everybody here is quite passionate about what they're doing. It's quite obvious. And we all want the best for the West End city of Methuen. And we think that things were done, handled wrongly in the past. Okay? I want to move forward. That's all I want to do is just move forward. And, and, and that's, that's what the message I like to get out there to people. But no, uh, I'm campaigning for myself. That's who I'm campaigning for, for myself.
Now, Mike Samard, don't you dare say nobody's supporting you because I know that there's at least one person supporting you.
Well, Tom, uh, I'm an independent. I'm like, I'm a kind of a one man show. I've been working hard. What you see is what you get. So I'm hoping everybody supports me because if I'm elected to the West End council, I don't care who gets in. As long as they're promoting what's right for the city, I'm all for it. I'm not going to be that guy to vote yes because she voted no or vote no because he voted yes. I'm going to be the guy that hopefully helps fix things and moves, moves us forward. But, you know, I, at my campaign kickoff, I had a lot of people there that, that supported me and, and gave me donations. And, and I was very happy that they were all there. And they all shared one thing. It was a passion for the, for, for the love of Methuen. And, and I think that's noble.
Are there any candidates that are openly supporting you?
I don't know. I, I mean, I got a few checks from people at that time, but no one's come to knock on me. No one's has signs in their yards or in their cars, but I would say.
Is there anybody that you're supporting?
Uh, I'm, I'm supporting the people that, uh, supported me, you know?
Yeah, Bill got my check too, by the way.
I've went to a few times too.
Not much of an answer though, Mike. I'm going to call you out on it.
What do you want me to say? I don't want to lose votes because I'm saying this or saying that. I want people to vote for me for what I'm going to do for this city. I'm an independent.
But I think the people at home need to know who's aligned with who. I, what I want you, what I want you to.
That's a, that's a tough way to say. When you say aligned, and, and, and I have no problem. I have a bumper sticker in my car and, and Mike, I'm going to disagree with you a little bit because there is a, a line in the sand as far as when you go to events and, and, and that part of it, I'm, I'm, when I'm asked directly what, what you asked me, I'm going to give you an honest answer.
And I appreciate your honesty a lot.
But I'm not running out and, and, and saying when I knock on a door in the west, it's, hey, vote for Bill Bryant and you have to vote for Jen Canaan. And if there's one person out there that I've done that too, call me out on it because you wouldn't be truthful. And I think that's the part where I'm concerned is when you go to events, there's people sitting at other mayors' tables that are being supported by them that aren't answering your question. And that's concerning to me because that goes back to name names. That's not my job.
Right.
People are tired of the arguing. They're tired of the, the, the calling people out in a negative way. What they want is they want people that want what's best for the city. But when you ask me a question directly, I'm going to give you the honest answer.
And I do appreciate the honesty. You don't want to revise or extend your remarks?
I'm supporting positive change is what I'm supporting, Tom.
All right. Ally Saffy.
And I met with both. I met with Neil Perry and I met with Jen Canaan. And I like them both. They're both great people. I'm all for change.
All right. Ally Saffy.
Um, I don't think people are sick of arguing. I think people are sick of not getting answers.
God bless you.
Um, I'm not like, yeah, I'm not, I understand the whole, I'm not campaigning because I'm not campaigning for anybody else. But like, I do support Neil Perry because, um, the track record of Canaan, I am not fond of. I, I think that she was one of the members on 2017 who could have stopped our whole entire issue we have right now. And I think that in order, in, in my perspective, insane, it goes for actually, um, another person who's on the school committee who's running right now. It's if you're presented with facts and with evidence and you voted wrongly, that's fine. We all make, we all make errors. I make errors daily at work. Well, not daily, but I've made big errors where I've had to say to my boss, hey, I, I screwed up. And like, I, I am fully responsible and I will take the consequence. But if you are not doing that, you're not owning up to what, whatever part, whether small or large, that's my issue. Is if you're still passing the blame, then I can't, I can't get behind that. Like if, if anyone were to say, any candidate running who's had any type of like voting issue or whatever, one bad vote, just say it. Just say, hey, I messed up. I shouldn't have done that. And I'm going to do better. Like I am going to change. Like I've learned my lesson. I'm going to do better. Like this is what I can do better. Like I am going to change. Like I've learned my lesson. I'm going to do better. Like this is what I can do better. So that's my view on that. And I, I've met with other candidates. I like, uh, DJ Borogad because he seems very educated. He sometimes gives me advice on stocks, which I need. And I don't know. And like honestly, I would support, I do support Mike and I have because, and I don't even need his support back, but I, yeah, Mike Samard, I went to, um, council meetings with him alongside of him and we wanted him to run for mayor.
Wait, wait. He's running against you and you're supporting him?
Yeah. He's a very stand-up person.
That's hilarious.
And like, and I'm not, not that the other candidates aren't, but like I meet, we were alongside of each other at the meetings and like, that's where I stand. So I'm not, it doesn't mean that I'm running around saying like, vote for who, like giving people cheat sheets, but like, I still think that like when your values and morals and your expectations line up with other peoples, then yeah, like I would support them. And if I, I, I don't know, I guess that's how I'll continue to roll.
And I, I think that question causes the, you know, division here and I, I think that we should just run our own campaign.
Well, I'm asking it of everybody because a lot of, a lot of the voters that I talked to in Methuen, that they, I say, well, who do you like in the West End or who do you like in the Central? And they say, well, who's with Canaan and who's with Perry? Or who's with this one or who's with Saber? So I, it's the voters. I mean, I, I get my questions from talking to voters and this is what their concerns are. And that's why I asked the question. And it might be divisive, but it's what people want. It's what people want it all.
But there's not a person here though, Tom, and I, I can't speak for Ally as we haven't talked, spoken a lot, but I've spoken to these two. There's not one person here that's going to side and vote with someone at their own integrity. And, and I think for me, that's, that's kind of my final point is, you know, the, the, the things that I do, the time that I put in, the, the, you know, I don't want to say hassle because at, at times I've, I've learned a ton. I've taught my kids a ton of, of this process. But for anyone to say that someone was put up by someone else to run and to give up all this time and to have your, your name out there and people insulting you and, and talking trash about you, so you can vote along someone else that, that could potentially damage your own reputation in the city you live in, I think people need to check that a little bit.
And I would agree with you on these four candidates that are here tonight, but I watched those meetings and Jessica Finicaro could propose saving babies from burning buildings and six people are voting no because she's the one that proposed it. So I think that's one of the reasons, that and a few other things are one of the reasons why the, the voters do want to know who's aligned with who. They don't want people who are going to vote no because of who's making the proposal. If, listen, I don't like Steve Saber, but if, if a candidate that, that I'm friendly with or a council I'm friendly with calls me and says, Saber's got an, uh, an initiative on the next agenda and they tell me what it is and it sounds good, I'm telling them to vote for it. Like if you think that's good, regardless of who it is that's making the proposal, you should be voting on the proposal, not the person making it.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. But I'm not running for office unfortunately. So we're a little bit. Isn't, aren't people voting for folks that can get other people behind their vote? You know, I've had conversations with Jess and, and, you know, that, that conversation about how do you get other people to, to rally around you? And I, I don't know if it's always a six oh, six oh vote, you know, against her.
Because Unis does, does vote with her once in a while. So it's six to two usually.
Jess is very smart. Very good for the city.
Right. But part of that process though, is you, you do have to get other people to, to support you. And I think that's, is that something that she could use some support in? Because if there is good initiatives and they're just saying no, kind of ask yourself, you know, that why? Once again, I say it, you know, you, you go back to follow the money. If there's, if people are getting upset and, and spending money on ads and criticizing people, you have to ask yourself, why are they doing that? Because it's never to help somebody else. It, it's always to help their own, their own special interests. And, and that to me is what is most concerning right now going on in this, this election.
I want to thank Makku Towing, Jason Makku. He's a good friend of the show. Uh, if your car breaks down or if you're going to need to bring your car to a mechanic, please call Makku Towing. He'll take care of you. Um, he's also a good guy. I actually know him pretty well. Uh, Climate Design Systems, Nina Lepoli is here. Thank you for coming, Nina, from Climate Designs. One of our sponsors. She's not, they're not just sponsoring this debate. They're sponsoring all of our debates. So we certainly appreciate them. It, it with the, with the winter coming, if you've got a heating problem, you want to make sure you check your heating system. Call Climate Design Systems. They'll come in and take care of you. Patriot Pest Management, with all of the triple E scares going on, if you want to have somebody come in and spray your property for mosquitoes or if you've got bed bugs or stink bugs, you've got any kind of other pest problem, call Patriot Pest Management. Royal House of Roast Beef, best roast beef in the Merrimack Valley, no matter what they say about that place in North Andover. Uh, Royal House of Roast Beef. And by the way, I actually go there for the clam rolls. The clam rolls are pretty good. So you want to try that if you go there. Um, and Your CBD Store, Brian at Your CBD Store in North Andover, uh, has sponsored us once again. Uh, CBD is, is the, the next up and coming thing to, to fix ailments like joint pain and stuff like that. So go see Brian. He does give free samples. Um, before we wrap up, uh, I want to give you guys a chance, uh, to make a closing statement. I'm not going to time it, but we, you know, we're a little over. So just try and be mindful of the time. And to make your final pitch as to why it is people should vote for you. Two of these people on the stage, ladies and gentlemen, will get elected in November, on November 5th. And they will be representing you in the West District of Methuen. And so this is kind of like your last chance. I don't know if there's any other debates coming up for you guys. But this could be your last chance to speak directly to the voters. So I want to give you guys as much time as, as I can, uh, for you to make your final pitch. Tell people who you are and what your priorities are if you get elected. And whoever wants to go first, or I'll call somebody out.
Okay. My name is Frank Gallo. I've been born and raised in this town. I own residential property and commercial property in this town. I can't be bought and I can't be influenced. My best heart is for the West End residents of Methuen, as we all are up here. Uh, I think it would be a great opportunity for Methuen to have some new ideas come to the board and I think that I could bring them to the board. And that we get to the bottom of all of these W2s and who's making money and who's not making money in this town. And I would appreciate a vote November 5th. Thank you.
That was really short. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Bill.
Um, as I said, I'm, I'm Bill Bryant. I've, I've lived in Methuen for over, over 25 years. I, I, I think that, you know, asked a, a question by Tom, I, I, I think you saw who I am as a person. I answered, I answered honestly. But I also want to say I'm running my own campaign. I'm running for West City District Council and, and I really want your vote. Uh, for me, this isn't the last time you're going to see me. You're going to see me at the Fall Festival at the Marsh on Saturday. You're going to see me knocking on doors. You're going to see my signs. If you see one blowing down Pelham Street, please stop it. And, and give me a call because those do cost money. Um, and, and running a campaign is, is not cheap. I, I think that what makes a good city councillor, Tom, is answering the, the tough question, even when you, you prefer not to. I, I think that one thing that I will show and people do know of Bill Bryant is regardless of who's elected mayor, regardless of who's elected in the East, in the West, in, in Central and at large, I, I have the ability to work with, with everybody. But my number one focus has always been the city, whether it's the, the student athletes, whether it's the, the students at Methuen High School or, or any of the grammar schools, that has been my focus. So the voters will know if they vote me in, they're going to get someone who's going to be honest, answer the honest questions. But also at times as a city council, you have to, with the information you have, you may have to make a difficult choice that in the beginning, it doesn't look like it's what the city wants. But as long as I can hold true to my integrity and, and be accountable to the voters, that's what I'm looking for. And, and I, I just appreciate everybody's time. I do want to give a quick plug. The Merrimack Valley Prevention and Substance Abuse Project, you talked earlier about talking about the homeless and, and for me, I, I think it starts with an organization like that. There is a, a, a drug issue going on across this country and there's a group that is, that could always use funds that is out there case by case, person by person, that is, is trying to educate families on, on tragedies of their own, of, 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 of current addicts that are, that are struggling. And I don't think the city does enough for those organizations.
I agree with that.
Because to prevent homelessness, unfortunately, it's mental health issues, it's drug abuse and things like that. So if we talked about more of that and we got educate, we educated the public on, on groups like that, I think we'd be a much better off city. So I want your vote on November 5th. You're going to get tenacity. You're going to get a ton of time. When we were at the, uh, the, the regency debate, there was a hundred and 10 page document that was given to us and I'll challenge each and every one of them. I read that before the debate and I did my homework and, and, you know, that's something that you're going to get from me as a city councillor as well.
Mike Samard.
Thank you, Tom. And I want to thank my fellow candidates, uh, throughout this whole campaign season. Everyone's been respectful and professional. And I think we all have one goal and that's to move Methuen forward. Um, my, my priority is how to fix the problems that has plagued the city for several years. These are tough times. Someone has to make tough decisions. Otherwise we're going to end up bankrupting in receivership and that's the harsh reality. Um, we have to make cuts across the board and start living within our means. The gravy train has to stop. Uh, in the primary, I did very well in the primary and I think the main reason was because people know me and they know what type of person I am. They know I have integrity and they know when I commit to something that, that, uh, I can get that done. And I know, they know I'm not going to kiss anybody's ring. I'm not going to bow down to anybody. I'm going to do what's right for the city. So, and I think people saw my hard work with the Sweet Out In Project and, and the dedication that Ally also put forward that, um, saved the, uh, the West End from that development and I, I hope it stays that way. So I'm asking that people just give me a chance to try and fix things and get things done and make people feel good about the city again. And please vote for Mike Samard November 5th. Thank you.
Wrapping up the debate for the 2019 Methuen West End City Council Debate, Ally Saffy.
Um, so I'm running for accountability, transparency, responsibility and restoring integrity between the government and the residents. Um, my main goal is to give the residents their voice back, which means also giving the residents the answers to the questions that they keep putting forward. Um, I think that those four things go hand in hand. Unfortunately, I do think that that leads to clearing up gray areas, which means you sometimes have to name people and you have to go through departments. Um, and actually like check into issues because otherwise they're, it's inevitable. We will be where we are right now in a couple of years if things do not change. And it, I think it takes, we are, I think all four of us are pretty passionate and I've shown that, me more so this meeting than before. But, um, if, if any one of us or actually two of us were to be on council, I think the city would be in good hands. Um, I think I'm showing you and telling you how, how adamant I am, I guess, about my interpretation and my definition when it comes to, uh, transparency, accountability and responsibility. Um, I think that, uh, we have to stop this money where you're just like, um, bleeding money out of all of our departments and, and the, the taxpayers don't really have much to show for it at this point. Um, that is a really big issue. And, um, taking up Bill Bryant on that challenge, I actually already, I had contacted Mast DOT about the whole Wheeler Road issue and tried to move that along and already made like contacts. So I got you. Just kidding.
I was just asking if you read the, if you read the document before the meeting.
Um, so that's me.
All right. Well, listen, this has been a very spirited debate. We thought that the central debate was going to be the most feisty, but it turns out this might have, this might have challenged it.
No way, Tom.
My, my, Joyce was good, but I think Ally, I don't know. There was a, I'm going to have to go back and I'm going to have to watch it. Uh, thank you very much for listening to the paying attention podcast debate. For two of the four candidates sitting up here are going to represent you on the Methuen City Council. Frank Gallo, Bill Bryant, Mike Samard, Ally Saffy, uh, two of them will get elected, two of them will get knocked off. Whoever it is that you vote for, please just make sure you vote. I also want to thank all of our sponsors, Climate Design Systems, Patriot Pest Management, Royal House of Roast Beef, Your CBD Store, Makku Towing. And I also want to give a free plug to Harrow's Pies, who donated 60 chicken pies to the homeless. When we do homeless family dinners on Wednesday nights last week, they donated 60 pies. It had to have cost a lot of money. I went on their site and I looked at how much they charged per pie. It was a lot of money that they donated. And we certainly appreciate that because they're giving back to the community. Ed Sullivan, our fine producer, I want to thank you. I want to thank Dave Garafalo, owner of the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. We podcast every week here on Thursday here, the paying attention podcast. Hire top two guys, smoke shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. Thank you very much. Next week we will have the at-large candidates and we're not going to allow them to have the love fest they've been getting away with for the last three debates. I promise you that will not be a love fest next week. And then on October 31st, the mayor's race here. Four days before the election, Jen Canaan and Neil Perry. Thank you everyone for listening.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks. The studio audience, give you guys a round of applause. You guys were good.
The views and opinions expressed by the hosts, guests or callers of this program do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. The United Podcast Network, its partners or affiliates.